... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Please note that all councilmen are here except for Councilman Kerr, who has, is being excused for tonight. Let's see, there is the Open Meetings Act, it's posted in the meeting room and assessable to the members of the public. Tonight, we'll start off with a proclamation for Autism Acceptance Month. Whereas autism is the fastest growing development disorder with approximately 70 million recognized cases worldwide, and whereas the increasing occurrences of autism in the United States is a telltale sign that it is a high time, the general public is factually educated and on the disorder to inspire change and support. And whereas screening for autism at an early age by being aware of its signs and symptoms can improve quality of life such as by underlying brain development, behavior therapy, and occupational therapy. And whereas the city of Beatrice wishes to honor those with autism and recommit ourselves to providing them and their families with the support and care they need to live independently, fully participate in their communities, and live fulfilling lives of dignity and opportunity. Now therefore I, Robert Morgan, Mayor of the city of Beatrice, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Autism Acceptance Month, and encourage our citizens to learn more about autism to improve early diagnosis, to learn more about the experience of autistic people from autistic people, and to be empathetic, warm, and welcoming to autistic individuals and families around us. With this my hand and the official seal of the city of Beatrice on the third day of April 2023. And I will present this to Councilman Fairbanks.
Thank you. Just real briefly, for people in the community that aren't aware, my, I have a, we have three grandchildren, my oldest grandson Cooper is on the spectrum, they live in Iowa, my son Tim is on the state board of, for the autism board in state Iowa, and I urge anyone to look into it, they're wonderful kids and people and they have a lot to offer, it's always said that they are not different, they are just the same as you and I, they're, they just have special gifts and abilities, so please look into it, it's, they're wonderful people, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. The consent agenda, all items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion, there'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a councilman so requests. A, approve agenda as submitted. B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive and place on file all materials having bearing on this meeting. D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on March 20th, 2023, is on file with the city clerk's office. E, approval of minutes of the work session meeting on March 27th, 2023, is on file with the city clerk's office. F, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $295,142. G, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $9,043.10. Award of bid for Gage County Industrial Park Sanitary Sewer Bypass Project Phase Three, 2023, to Lamo Plumbing in the amount of $406,127.42, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval of public funding request from Beatrice Noon Kiwanis Club in the amount of $2,600 for the annual Medecus Basketball Tournament event. Item J, approval of public funding request for Beatrice Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $6,250 for Homestead Days 2023. K, resolution number 7036, approving a request from the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce to close Highway 136, which is also known as Court Street, from 3rd Street to 19th Street on Saturday, June 24th, 2023, between 8:00 a.m. and 12:30 p.m. for the Homestead Days Parade. Item L, resolution number 7037, appointing Craig Zarbanicki to the Board of Public Works. Item M, resolution number 7038, executing the request for reconvenance and the deed of reconvenance along with all the necessary documents to terminate the deed of trust for the energy efficiency loan agreement dated May 26, 2020, between the city and Alan Mendigan and Candace Mendigan. And item N, resolution number 7039, executing the request of reconvenance and the deed of recovery along with all the necessary documents to terminate the deed of trust for the energy efficient loan agreement dated April 22nd, 2021, between the city of Monte Welch and Christina Welch. Anybody have anything they'd like to pull off the agenda? If not, Mr. McLean.
I move the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Your vote, please. And that passes 7-0. Okay, three, public hearings and bids. The public hearing on the rezoning of lots 21 through 23, Block 4, Highland Park Addition to the city of Beatrice, has been postponed until further notice, so we'll move on to public hearing B. Public hearing on the application of Beato's Restaurant LLC, doing business as Beato's Restaurant, 124 South 23rd Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a new application for a Class I liquor license. Captain Moss.
Mayor Morgan, Councilman.
Hold on, hold on, Dan.
Okay.
You gotta get sworn in here first. Oh, okay, sorry. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Investigator Byrne did a background check on Pedro Mateo Montejo, and he did not find anything which would prevent the issuance of manager's license in regard to the Class I liquor license, there were some traffic infractions, but that was really it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I have the report for the Community Development Department, when they looked at the zoning issues that were there, everything rounded, today it's a zone general commercial, it's gonna be a zone general commercial afterwards, this location's been a restaurant in the past, it's had liquor license in the past, they saw nothing that would preclude it from having a liquor license moving forward.
Discussion from council? From the public? Seeing none.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:07 p.m.
Second.
Your vote, please. And that passes. Okay, public hearing, item C. Oops, we gotta go, oh, all right, sorry. Wanted to just kinda speak through that, I guess it didn't work, did it?
I move that the application for Beato's Restaurant LLC, doing business as Beato's Restaurant, 124 South 23rd Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a new application for Class I liquor license be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, your vote, please. And that passes 7-0. Okay, public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of Plan Modification QQ to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number six, for the specific area contained therein and described as follows, all of blocks 1, 2, 4, and Outlet A, Covered Bridge Heights Seventh Addition, to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
So yes, what we have here is another TIF project, this one is, if for those of you familiar with the Flowing Springs area, this would be just west of the Covered Bridge, Metal Lane is what goes up into this development, all the houses are, or excuse me, all the lots on the east side of the property have been built already, there's one duplex on the left side or west side of the street there that has been built already. Initially, it was with Goosen Construction, with the passing of Marv, or excuse me, Louis Goosen, there were some changes in the corporate structure there, and so now this portion is with, I'll make sure I get that here.
TNK.
TNK?
TMK.
TNK, which is Troy Cook. So Troy Cook is looking to build a triplex on this lot this spring, and once that's completed, if it goes well, he'll look to build another triplex, triplex just to the west of the first one he builds, and if that goes well, he'll look to build a duplex probably next spring on the last set of lots there, right at the intersection of Metal Lane and what's Longfellow Avenue in this location. So this particular property, again, it's just a TIF item, looking to build those things will be done in up to three phases, that's kinda the way we sort of the structures of these, so each lot has its own phase and can run for its own 15-year time period, total what we're projecting is about $469,000 in TIF revenue over the course of everything getting built out. Phase one will be approximately $158,000 in TIF revenue coming in for this particular project, and we anticipate the increase in valuation to be about $2.3 million on these lots, once you build everything out.
From the public? None? Okay.
The other thing I would note, it's been to CRA twice, it's been playing in zoning once already, you guys are the fourth meeting in this process, and assuming it passes tonight, we'll go back to CRA, believe it's next Friday, for final approval, so.
Okay, Mr. McLean.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:10 p.m.
Second.
Your vote, please. And the hearing is now closed. Now a public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of Plan Modification RR to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number nine, for the specific area contained therein and described as the follows, lots 1 through 3, inclusive Sony Addition, to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska. Hearing is now open.
Another TIF project here, this one's on the east side of town, close to where the last one was at, you see Highway 136 and Scott Street, kind of that intersection there, what we have done recently is we replotted that area into three separate lots, part of the Sony Addition, this TIF project, again, includes all three lots, it'll be done in up to three phases as well, so again, just when the first building gets started, we start that phase of the TIF project to cover that particular lot. This is looking to be a, a commercial endeavor here at this particular location, let me get a couple notes here. We're looking for up to $475,000 in TIF revenue, phase one, we project to be about $309,000 in TIF revenue, we think increased valuations will be about $2.3 million when it's, everything is built out, this one is with TAH Enterprises or Properties or Inc., I'm gonna say TAH, which is Todd Heidl.
Okay, discussion?
Since we have a little bit of a crowd, does anybody want the Reader's Digest version of what TIF is, or does everybody know? Nope, nobody wants it.
We'd be glad to give you the summary.
We all, we all know, I just thought, here's your chance.
Sure, so the way TIF works is, we'll go back to the map here and pull that up for you. So the valuation today on those lots that you see there, let's just say it's $30,000, and so you're paying property taxes on that $30,000, and again, just for ease of simplicity, let's just say it's $1,000 in taxes that you're paying, that $1,000 today goes to the school, goes to the county, goes to the city. When, in this case, Mr. Heidl builds out whatever commercial endeavor he's doing here, again, we estimate property tax, or the property valuation to go to $2.3 billion, he'll pay property taxes on that, but that property tax increase, instead of going to the school, the county, and to the city, will get captured and go back to help pay for the improvements that go into the property there, water main extensions, sewer line extensions, streets that need to be paved, paved, those types of things are usually what go back into it, so, and that can last for up to 15 years or the expense that he has in particular property.
TIF stands for Tax Increment Financing, and it, so it doesn't go to anything that's his, part of his commercial property, it doesn't go to his structure, anything that like that, it just goes back to pay us back for the curb and gutter, the water, the sewer, the electrical, anything that the city does. There you go.
Yeah, so just the only thing that's paid for are public improvements with that, so.
Yep. Every day's a school day.
Mr. McLean.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:14 p.m.
Second.
Your vote, please. Public hearing is now closed. Okay, last public hearing for the night, public hearing on the acquisition of real property from Main Street Incorporated, described as follows, east half of Lot 11, all of Lot 12, Block 49, Beatrice Original, Gage County, Nebraska.
All right, so for those who aren't familiar with lots and blocks, this is the Kensington Building, I'm sure everybody's familiar with where the Kensington Building's at here in town, at 6th and Court Street, there's lots of moving parts here, so we'll try to go through a couple of these things. As everybody knows, the Kensington Building kinda sits at the heart of our downtown, it's a rather large structure in the, in the community, and when it closed in April of last year, many of us kinda sat down and thought, how can we, what are we gonna do with this building moving forward, how do we continue to make it prosperous in our community, and it's kind of a main goal we've had over the last year is finding a solution to that particular issue down there. And thanks to a grant from DED and a partnership with Age Mark and Main Street, Beatrice and the city of Beatrice, revitalization of this historic building is closing, is closer to becoming a reality today than it was ever before. And so what we have got now is, again, we've got a grant through DED to help with some of the purchase price and rehab of this particular property, but many of these things are contingent upon other things, so our grant with DED is contingent upon SENS Act to getting their own grant, which is Southeast Nebraska Housing Something Affordable Housing Fund, they have to get a grant, if they get their grant, then we get our grant, and if that happens, then we do some acquisition of the property. Age Mark had their deadlines of when they wanted to get this property off of their books, which is kind of what forced some action here to kinda get things moving, and so they've been very polite and great to work with. Closing between the city and Main Street on actual acquisition of the property has not been set, again, it has to do with when the grant funds come through, that will help determine when our closing happens between the city and Main Street. In the meantime, upon Main Street's acquisition of the property, the city will lease the property from Main Street for $1 a month, hopefully it's a relatively short-term lease, but we'll see, we've, so we've got that kind of the stopgap again, just not knowing exactly when everything's gonna come through. And then at that future date, when the city does acquire the property from Main Street, it'll either be for the amount of the grant or for $1, depending upon if that grant comes through. If the grant does come through, and the city is able to acquire it from Main Street for that million dollars, Main Street will immediately turn around and donate the money back to the city, and the money donated back has to be used to preserve, promote, revitalize, and improve the downtown, so it gets invested back into the downtown of our community. Through all of this, we wanna make sure that Main Street is made whole, i.e. that it doesn't cost them anything to kinda be partners in this endeavor, and so there's a couple things in these agreements, one is that at time of closing, Main Street will be able to reimburse up to $50,000 for legal fees, accounting fees, closing costs, those types of things that they've incurred already, and then they'll also receive a $20,000 administrative fee, and those go to future costs that neither one of us can quantify at this time, we know they're coming, i.e. they know they'll have a bigger tax liability next year, they know that they'll have additional accounting fees next year because of the size of this transaction, they know some of those fees are coming, that we just don't know how to quantify them exactly, but we've done our best to try to put some numbers to it, but they'll receive those dollars upfront. So again, lots of ifs and ands and maybes and buts, but that's kind of the plan as things go forward here with this particular piece of property.
And just a note on that contingent grant award, we should know whether or not SENS has gotten accepted of their award sometime in May, that they, those agreements have to be signed by the 1st of June, so May is usually is our cutoff for knowing whether or not we're gonna get that.
The simple version.
The simple version.
So, do you guys perceive that the initial closing with Main Street, is that gonna happen fairly soon, and then we start paying a buck, or are we gonna wait longer, closer to see what happens with the grant?
So the closing should occur within 45 days of whether or not we get the grant?
No, Main Street's closing with Age Mark should occur probably within the week.
Okay, that's what I was wondering about.
Age Mark wants to do it relatively quickly.
Yep.
From the public, I mean, it is an opportunity that we do have to, you know, make a corner pillar of our downtown whole, so this is really a great opportunity.
Bob, I would like to thank Michael and Main Street for the work they did on this in conjunction with Tobias and Taylor, it was a joint venture, I guess we'd say, and it was, seems to be it's this far from being a successful one, and it takes a long time to get this done, but I thank you for that.
Very good point, thank you. Mr. McLean.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:19 p.m.
Second.
Your vote, please. And that passes. Moving on to resolutions, resolution number 7040, adopting Plan Modification QQ to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number six, the Covered Bridge Heights West Redevelopment Project.
I move the resolution number 7,040 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Again, this is just the particular redevelopment for Troy Cook, upon your approval tonight, it'll go to CRA yet again, and we've already got redevelopment agreements out, so hopefully those get reviewed and signed by those parties, and we'll be ready to move forward here soon.
Your vote, please. And resolution number 7040 passes 7-0. Resolution number 7041, adopting Plan Modification RR to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number nine, the TAH Properties Redevelopment Project.
I move the resolution number 7,041 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Your vote? Oops, discussion, oh, vote, sorry.
It's just same story, just it's Todd Heidl's property instead of Troy Cook's on this one, so.
Your vote, please. And 7041 passes. Okay, the third resolution, resolution number 7042, executing the purchase agreement for all necessary documents to acquire real estate from Main Street, Beatrice Incorporated.
I move the resolution number 7,042 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Discussion?
So you have three agreements here, as you can imagine, a transaction like this requires a few documents to get drafted here, so the first one you have is the purchase agreement, and that's the city buying the property from Main Street, again, with all those contingencies kinda laid out in there, and then you'll have the lease, and then you have what we call the grant agreement, which is Main Street donating money back to the city, so there is a reason why we have three different documents, we spent many hours debating and arguing about how many there should be and how they should be drafted, but this is what we came up with, so.
Seeing none, your vote, please. That passes 7-0. Resolution number 7043, entering into a lease with Main Street and Beatrice Incorporated for the purpose of leasing the property, commonly known as 105 North 6th Street and the Kensington Building.
I move the resolution number 7,044 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Any discussion needed, gentlemen?
The only thing I note on the lease is essentially, while we are leasing the property, we're responsible for taxes and insurance and upkeep and all those things, so we're getting all those, that stuff in place and lined up, ready to go, but we are responsible for all those during the term of the lease.
Seeing no discussion, your vote, please. Resolution number 7043 passes 7-0. Resolution number 7044, executing the grant agreement with Main Street, Beatrice Incorporated, to grant funds to the city for the purpose of preserving, promoting, revitalizing, and otherwise improving downtown Beatrice and the historic district.
I move the resolution number 7,044 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Discussion?
Here, the most important thing was just to work through Main Street's 501(c)(3) status and ensure that it remained applicable as they move forward, they don't lose that as a result of this transaction, so that was a big part of this particular agreement here, as we work through it, again, once the money's back into the city, it can only be used, as stated there, for preserving, promoting, revitalizing, or otherwise improving the downtown area, so.
Have they worked through that, T, you know? The status?
I don't know if they've worked through that, I think some of it will kinda just come up as they go, but I think we've worked to keep it as, as safe as possible moving forward.
And the only real restriction there is that you can use it for all these stated purposes, the one string is that you can't use it for full, for full structural demolition.
Hopefully we won't need that.
Correct, correct.
Any further discussion? Your vote, please. And that passes 7-0, resolution number 7044. Resolution number 7045, applying for the assistance from the Transportation Alternatives Program for the purpose of extending Homestead Trail from Riverside Park to the Homestead National Historic Park.
I move the resolution number 7,045 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Discussion?
Another project that's been on the radar for quite some time is this particular trail, I know we've been talking about it for over 10 years, this would be a trail that goes from Riverside Park west out to the Homestead National Historic Park. This particular trail would be part of the Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, we use the same application here recently when we did the trail from the water park out to Hannibal Park, if anybody remembers, that trail took about eight years to construct once you were awarded the grant, that's federal red tape getting cut, not ours, and just for clear. On this particular one, National Park Service has been a great partner, Nebraska Department of Transportation's been a great partner, as we've been working through this, we looked at some proposed alternatives in 2021, 2022, early '22, that memo came out, all of those suggested kinda about four different alternatives, the biggest thing that has changed on this particular project is that when we initially looked at it, again, a decade ago, the state was adamant that they would not allow trails on their right-of-way, they have changed that vision, they are now willing to allow trails to go on their right-of-way, which makes this trail now viable moving forward. It is 2.89 miles long, we're projecting to be a 10-foot wide trail, it'll have three bridges on its way out to the Homestead, estimated cost is $5.1 million, of this grant goes through, our funding is generally around an 80/20 split, so usually the grant picks up 80% of it, we're responsible for 20%, for some quick math, 20% of $5.1 million is around $1 million. The National Park Service has already contributed half a million dollars to Nebraska Department of Transportation for this grant, which goes towards our match, so our match isn't being cut in half as a result of some funding from the National Park Service. We have an open house tomorrow at the city auditorium from 4 to 6, for those who'd like to come down and receive some additional information about this particular trail, we'll provide it at that point as, as well, but assuming this moves forward, again, this is just the grant application, if we're awarded, it is a rather long time till actual construction occurs.
It's a great opportunity to connect to the Homestead. Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, your vote, please. That passes 7-0. Resolution number 7046, executing the project program agreement between the city and Nebraska Department of Transportation regarding NDOT project number TAP-fltp-3444, N dot control number 13488, Beatrice Homestead Trail Phase One.
I move the resolution number 7,046 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So as part of, anytime you do an agreement or a program with the Department of Transportation, they have you sign a program agreement, just outline, lays out who's responsible for what things. In this, the Department of Transportation will act as responsible charge party, which means they kinda oversee the project, lays out our responsibilities in there, which are largely to enforce federal law, like we have to on a number of other grants, nothing particular in there, the National Park Service is also included in this because they're contributing and being a part of this as well. The one thing I will note is it does say Phase One, the reason being is that Phase Two would actually be in the park itself, and if you've tried to fund a trail in the park itself, it gets a different level of federal environmental review that we're trying to avoid, so we will stop at the trail, or the park entrance, the park themselves, we create a new trail inside their own park, those would be Phase Two. I don't know why, I still haven't figured it out, but if the National Park Service wants to build a trail on their own property, the federal highway department will not allow it, although it's their own property and they want it, and so it was best just to stop at the gates and let them build it into their park themselves. So if anybody's questioning, what's Phase Two, that's Phase Two.
Any discussion, gentlemen? From the public?
How do you get over your side of the south?
Come on up, that's all right. That's all right. Just got to have you come up and state your name. Here we go again, yep.
Mark Melko, 648 Overlook Lane. I was just wondering how they get to the north side of the south side?
North side of the south side of?
Of the highway.
Of the highway. So the idea is you'll come out, and plans have not been finalized yet. So we have some preliminary ideas, but nothing's been finalized. There's not exact location determined. But what we're looking at today is when you come out of Riverside Park, you would immediately jump the road and head to the, on the south side of the road, on River Road, and you would take that one over to Highway Four. You'd cross there and then be on the south side of Highway Four and run that the rest of the way out.
That makes sense. Instead of all the way out and get over.
Yeah, and then have the. That's the preliminary idea at this point.
Good question.
I would assume that that crossing on the highway, there'd be some sort of markings. But would there be any kind of signage out there that there's a trail crossing there?
Yes, there would be signage out there. Yes, the Department of Transportation has all those rules you'd have to follow. That will be out there. Yep.
Gentlemen, your vote, please. And resolution number 7046 passes 7-0. Okay, resolution number 7047, changing Eighth Street to two-way traffic on May 15, 2023, instead of May 1, 2023, and regulating parking stop signs and speed limits along Eighth Street.
I move the resolution number 7047 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So when we made Eighth Street from one-way traffic to two-way traffic, we knew we'd have to come back with another resolution to talk about stop signs and those types of things. And so we've got that in here. What it does is it requires northbound traffic to stop at Monroe, Lincoln, and Grant Street. So Monroe and Lincoln are very obvious. Those always had stop signs the other direction. Grant Street, because of the jog there, we're going to recommend starting at a four-way stop. We'll see how things kind of progress from there. We do flip parking from the east side of the road to the west side of the road from Grant to Ella. Again, as we talked about when we talked about this initially, the deflection in that particular intersection there made sense to flip parking over, so you change and made that deflection as least amount as possible. So that will occur. The speed limit will go, from Ella to Monroe, goes from 35 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. Again, it becomes a residential road. All residential streets are 25 miles per hour, and so we lowered that one. And then the effective date, initially, we had it being changed on May 1. However, when we picked that day, we didn't remember that it was also Clean City Week, and the guys who were out doing Clean City Week also have to be the guys that make these changes. And so that's why we're pushing it back to May 15, to give them an opportunity to do Clean City Week, do that service, and then have time to come back and make the change over for the May 15 date.
Gentlemen, any discussion? From the public? Seeing none, your vote, please. And resolution number 7047 passes 7-0. Okay, moving on to ordinances. Ordinance number 236, it's the third and final reading, adding Article XIX in section 16 through 60 through 1664, inclusive to chapter 16 of the Beatrice City Code regarding ATVs and UVTs. I introduce the ordinance number 236 for the third and final time.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-6, be read by title for the third and final time.
Second.
Open up for discussion. We'll start with Mr. Fraylon.
I'd like to introduce the addition of registration to the UTVs effective January 1, 2024. They say that or add that in the absence of any state regulations at this point to do so. This way, we have a secondary backup if we need it. It's be effective on January 1, 2024.
Means a second. Any second, okay. Is there a second on the amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment only.
So in your packet was a proposed amendment that Mr. Fraylon just introduced. You'll note in there that what it does is adds a couple of sections to this particular ordinance. Most notably, it adds the registration as was indicated, being beginning January 1 of 2024. Again, that gives an opportunity for LBs at 66 to work through the legislature before we start ours. So, but we still went ahead and add section 62 with regards to registration, how that works. We added the dealer registration, because there will be dealers that have these, and so much like dealer license plates have for their vehicles. We have a section here about issuance and denial. So if you do make a permit application and is denied, you have a process, very similar to that we did with food trucks. We have an appeal hearing, again, very similar from that one. And then the other chain in here is we note that the ordinance would go into effect April 22 of 2023. Usually, after an ordinance passes, there's 15 days it has to go before it becomes law. So this one, we just went ahead and state the date, which is more than 15 days after today, but it's that first Saturday after it would be able to. So April 22, 2023 would be the first time you'd be able to operate a UTV inside the city limits.
Yeah, I believe Councilman Kerr was going to introduce this amendment originally, and unfortunately, he can't be with us tonight. But I think I want to thank him for doing that on his behalf.
Well, I think we all agree that we needed it, and it was part of Rich's wants and needs as part of this deal, and happy to introduce it and for him. I would also say that, you know, there's been a lot of time and effort and discussion put into this entire thing. Thanks to you and Taylor for all the rights and rewrites and everything that's been on. Everybody has come up and spoke in favor and/or against the ordinance. There's been a diligent effort on both sides to provide good, solid information. There's been some really good discussion, and I appreciate everybody's efforts through this six, eight-week process, whatever it's been at this point. And just, that's it.
Okay. Is there any discussion further from the council? Anything from the public?
And again, it has to be on registration, because the amendment is on registration.
Right.
We'll then come back and vote again on the ordinance itself.
Okay, and I have been here a couple of times. My name is Wayne Yelosier. I live on South Third Avenue in Ward One. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate your time and taking up a little bit of your time. We don't want to spend a lot of time. When you guys get home, your wife wants to know where you've been, how long it took. Don't blame me for all of it. Okay. This is the last meeting, is we're going to for a vote. I was going to address asking the council to read the ordinance as amended. Luckily, I was given that information tonight to save any embarrassment on my part. But anyway, yes, they are a lot of fun in their environment, but these vehicles are not in their environment.
Okay, but that one might come a little bit later. Right now, what we need to do to discuss the registration process.
Okay.
Amendment on the floor.
Stay right there.
But so you stay there.
All right. We'll stay here.
We'll see what the, how the amendment goes here for registration, and then we'll open up for full discussion.
I thought we were all ready to vote.
We're close. We got to do two votes. We're really close. You're all right. Okay. Anything on the amendment? All right. Gentlemen, your vote, please.
Now, your vote is on the amendment to add registration into it.
Right.
We'll vote in just a minute on actual passage. This is just to add the registration. Ready?
And that passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as I continue with some of my concerns, which have been addressed, they're in here, which has been on your mind and all. We just had some concerns about that, and we see that have been addressed a lot of them. But it didn't say anything that's going to have lights, but it didn't say anything about driving at night.
Driving at night is not. It does. It's only from the hours between sunset and sundown, like.
Sunrise and sunset.
Sunrise to sunset, yes.
Now, which is it?
Sunrise to sunset.
Okay, but that's not evening hours.
They, yeah, once the sun sets, they're not allowed on the roads.
Correct.
Okay.
And I think the lights and those things are all part of what was in the state.
Correct.
So that's why it's not in the ordinance, but they do have to have lights. They have to have safety seat belts, or they have to wear a helmet. A lot of those things are addressed in the states.
And that actually is in the ordinance as well.
Okay, I'm reading some of that. Appreciate that.
Just for your clarification, sir, while operating between the hours of sunrise and sunset, your lights must be on.
And I see most, these vehicles are going to have lights.
Yes.
To be lit. I know they're a lot of fun in their environment, but I still am concerned about them in the city. I have concerns about how are you going to get from south of the river downtown, west of the river downtown?
So the only way to get from the south side to the north side and east side to the west side, if you live on the south side of town, you have to go over to Center Street. You take Center Street up to Highway 136. From Center Street to Second Street on 136 is the only highway access the UTVs will have. They're not allowed on Highway 77, which is four lanes. And again, they're just restricting them to Center Street to Second Street, and they have to get off at that point. So that's their access to get there.
That's only access point.
Yes.
And Center Streets by the West Scott Ball Diamonds, where the old Up and Hours grocery store used to was.
Yeah. I thought they still would be on part of the highway.
Yeah, and then on the highway from Center to Second, Second Street's where the museum is.
Where Bridges.
Over the bridge.
They can go over the West Court Bridge from Center Street to Second Street. Other than that, they're not allowed on any highways except for to cross at a 90-degree angle at a marked intersection.
Okay, that's good to get that defined. Now, how about informing the community about the new ordinance that's coming in, because it's going to affect everybody in the community? Where you have a vehicle, right in a vehicle, but anyone that's walking or driving has to be aware of what the stipulations are on these UV vehicles. Is there going to be some informational presented to the city? Tim, what's your plan?
I can gladly host a informational meeting at the city auditorium at a, anytime between now and April 22, as long as, unless we could do it on a meeting night, and I can get out of here. Just kidding. But I would be more happy to have an informative information meeting at the, at the city auditorium. We'll post a date on the city website, and it will happen before April 22.
I think that's very important, and so I'm glad that those are informed individuals of the council perform that.
Yep, no problem.
And if it should pass, we'll also hit it on one of the Ask the Mayor's on a couple of Thursdays before it goes into action as well.
Okay. That's great.
It will also be published in the newspaper.
Published in the.
Posted in the newspaper and on the city website.
It'll be on the radio?
Website.
I'm sure Doug will get it on the radio.
If anybody listens to it.
We'll do our best to get it really well-covered. I mean, it's going to be hard to.
I'm sure you will, but I have to ask that.
Sure. No, it's a good question.
As a concern.
In fact, if we can set April 18 as a date, I would just do it on that Tuesday night, if that's available.
We'll make it happen.
There, April 18 for the media, from 5.
Gentlemen, I appreciate the thought of you to have a little input on this, as small as it is. But I see you're going to be addressing some of the concerns we've had, and I appreciate that very much. And if I want to go downtown, will you come and give me a ride?
I'll give you my number afterwards. I'll give you, I'll give you a ride.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll.
Margaret Hayth, 104 West Granville. Here we are again. This time, no notes, no petitions showing how many people have voted against it, far more than what are for it. I don't have any notes in which I've, or data for which I fact-checked and clarified some of the information that has come from this council. But there is one more issue that I want to mention, and that is, after the last council meeting, I heard it said, the statement that whenever an important issue like this comes up in front of the council and the mayor, it is your responsibility to look at that issue and decide, is it good for the city or is it bad for the city? When I heard that, I thought, what an excellent point. Is it good for the city or is it bad for the city? So I emailed all of you, asking that each of the councilmen reply to me and just answer what I thought was a pretty simple question, a fair question, just to help me and the other people in this town that are against this ordinance to help us understand something. And that question was, by allowing the UTVs on the streets and in some of the city parks, how is that good for the city of Beatrice? And I only got two replies back. So I guess that kind of tells me with the rest of you that didn't reply, maybe you couldn't answer the question. So I guess that leaves us with, how can the city council vote yes on an ordinance that is not good for the city and it's not going to make Beatrice a better place to live? So thank you for your time. Thank you for serving on the council, and thank you, Mr. McLean and Mr. Esker for replying to my email.
Well, and thank you for all the information you've provided.
Mitch Meeky, 210 Granville Avenue. First, I have a question. Can any member of the city council propose an ordinance, or does it have to be suggested by a citizen?
It can be either.
Okay. It's been mentioned a couple of times about how the few people that don't want this, and I have wondered, well, exactly how many people do want this? Because, you know, was it four? Was it five? Was it 10? I don't, I don't know. But at the last two, the first meeting that I watched online, if I'm not mistaken, there were three people that voted, that voiced their opinion that they wanted it, and one against it. Ever since then, there's been more people that have spoke against it than for it. So that should tell the city council something. And my other question for the city council is, how many people, how many of you came to these meetings to read this ordinance with an open mind? Or did you come here, this is the way I'm going to vote, no matter what is presented, no matter what is said? Because if you have not had an open mind, then what's the purpose of the public comments? Just to pacify us? Or should you listen to the concerns, the pros and cons, whatever, either way, of whatever ordinance, whatever issue it is? So I'm against it. I think it's, whether it's one or two accidents or injuries or whatever it is, I think they're going to increase. By how many? I don't know. I meant to look up the city diagrams of North Platte. Columbus was mentioned. Nebraska City, I think, was mentioned, and to find out exactly how the city, those cities are laid out and what highways dissect them. Because Nebraska is almost like, you know, like a plus sign. You got one north and south and one east and west. Nor Platte, yeah, they have the interstate, but it's south of town. So without that information, I really can't make a better point than, you know, you've had some people say, compare city and states to Beatrice, and other people say, I don't care about any other city or states. I just care about Beatrice. You're going to have that no matter what you do. But the issue was brought up, our comment was made regarding my first. But the issue was brought up, our comment was made regarding my fir, one of my questions as far as if you have to have a citizen go to the city council. One of the comments that was brought up was, you know, that there's been a lot of people speak out about the safety of this, but not a lot of people have spoken up about, what are you going to do about the drug problem, or what are you going to do about this or that? Well, so I'm going to kind of throw a mirror up, and it's like, when's the last time a city council member has said anything? Said, hey, we need to fix this, or we need to do that? You can't just put it on the citizens. So I really hope that you came here with an open mind. I'm just not sure how many did. And I get you can have feelings, but if somebody presents you with something, you should have an open mind to at least listen. You may agree with it, may not agree with it, but it should be something that should be, maybe make you go, maybe I ought to rethink this. Maybe there was. But I don't feel there was. I feel that if the councilman that said, I want to pull this off so we can discuss it, this would have been boom, one vote and it would have been done. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Just, you know, you were talking about more people showing up here seem to be against it. I've actually had more people contact me that have been for it than have been against it. So, you know, I guess I came into this with an open mind. I have no, you know, I don't have an UTV, an ATV, or motorcycle or anything like that. But with the people in my district that have contacted me, there are some that have them, they want it to do so. And the majority of the people that have contacted me were in favor of it, so. But yes, they have contacted me.
Tony Arena, 308 South 21st Street. I don't have an ATV. I'll probably never get one. I've sat here every time this has come up since the beginning. I am for it. I think it's great for the community. I do know that there were several people in the back here a couple of weeks ago that were all for it. Too shy to come up and say something. So I think it's great for the community. I think it's going to be great for everybody. I don't you know, I'm not a police officer or anything, so you know, you can't guess what's going to happen. But I do think it's going to be great for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no more discussion. Gentlemen, your vote, please.
So this will be the third and final vote on it. If it passes tonight, it will become law, and if it doesn't, it will fail.
That will pass 5:2. So ordinance number 23-6, an ordinance to add Article XIX and Section 1660 through 1664 inclusive to Chapter 16 of the Beatrice City Code regarding ATVs and UTVs, and to repeal conflicting ordinances or parts of ordinances, and to provide for publication in electronic form and for the effective date of 4/22/23. Okay. We go back, let's see, to a resolution, Resolution Number 7048, establishing various fees.
I move that Resolution Number 7,048 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Discussion?
With the passage of the last ordinance and in there being some different fees that were called out, we put everything in the fee agreement. So what we've added in there is UTV registration and renewal is $25 for an individual, it's $100 for a dealership license. If UTV registration, if there's an appeal fee, is $50, and a replacement fee is $10 if somebody loses their sticker or license plate, or whatever we come up with, that'll be in there. The only other change is, we noted in the section with regards to sanitation that there's no refund on roll-off rental fees or roll-off services. We made that note. We had discussed the possibility of some changes to the pool rates. However, we have not gone forward with that one. We've left pool rates alone for another year, so.
Discussion? From the public? Gentlemen, your vote, please. And Resolution Number 7048 passes. All right, another ordinance, ordinance vacating a portion of South Ninth Street and Elm Street.
I move the said ordinance be given number 23-8. The title there be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Second?
Second.
Okay. Your vote, please? That passes 7-0. Ordinance number 23-8 by number only, let's see, by only the number, only by number the first time, the second time, and the third time.
I move that said ordinance number 23-8 be passed and approved.
Second.
Discussion?
So, Aaron, if you could pull up that map just a little bit for everybody. So what we have here is some property down around South A Street, South Ninth Street, out towards the golf course area. Mr. Haykey has approached us about acquiring, you see the area there in the yellow. It's an old platted street that was platted back in the 1800s. It's never been used. There is a sanitary sewer line that runs back through his property. So what you have before you tonight is, first is to vacate those portions of South Ninth Street and Elm Street. And then the next portion is to transfer those to Mr. Haykey for $200, and we retain all of the easements back there we need for our sanitary sewer line, electric line, access easements, and everything else. This project's been going on for about a year now, trying to get all the necessary property owners to agree on how to get this done, how to replat everything. But the first step in this process is to vacate this, and the next thing you'll have is to sell those to Mr. Haykey and his wife, and then we'll come back after that transfer is done with a plat to replat all this area. So it's been a rather long process. I think we've also got rezoning coming up as well as part of this, so this is step one in this process.
Discussion, gentlemen? From the audience? Your vote, please? And ordinance number 23-8, yeah, passes 7-0. Ordinance to convey real estate owned by the city to Andrew S. Haykey and Krista K. Haykey.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-9. The title there be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
That's right.
Second? Okay, all right. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please? And that passes 7-0. Ordinance number 23-9 by number only the first time. 23-9 the second time, and 23-9 the third time.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-9 be passed and approved.
Second.
Discussion?
Again, just kind of the second part, we just vacated it. Now we'll look to transfer this to the Haykeys. So we require to have an ordinance on it, and then you'll have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign all the necessary documents to have that transaction go forward.
Discussion? Seeing none, your vote, please? And that ordinance number 23-9 passes 7-0. Okay. Resolution Number 7049 entering into a contract for sale of real estate with Andrew S. Haykey and Krista K. Haykey.
I move that Resolution Number 7,049 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Again, just this is the resolution part of it, authorizing the mayor to sign all the documents to transfer this property to the Haykeys. Since it is the sale of property, we have to wait 31 days, correct, for the remonstrance period? To give the public an opportunity there. So that's what will delay closing on this particular property, but as I indicated, it's $200 fee is what we come up with. It's a bunch of land that we haven't used for quite some time, and like I said, it's got a number of different utilities that run across it, and we require, retain a lot of easements in that particular area, so.
Any discussion at all, public, council? Okay, your vote, please? And Resolution Number 7049 passes 7-0. Item six, public forum. Purpose of public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will take place in the city council this time. Anybody here for the public forum? If not, we'll move on to seven, discussion reports. Public Properties Department overview. Welcome.
I'm Mark Pethod, Public Properties Director for the city of Beatrice. Been in this job for about 28 years, so I have four employees, Max Harder, Mike Deedert, and Terry Bra. And so we have basically 12 to 15 part-time employees that we do on a seasonal from April 15th to October 15th, so they take care of basically all of the city-owned properties, which would be like your parks, all your city-owned buildings, city auditorium, Board of Pluck Works, Police Department Carnegie Building, Beatrice Fire Department, Beatrice Public Library, Senior Center, and then the new athletic facility out at Hannibal Park. So we have, we take care of the trails, 18 miles of trails here in town. We have eight paved, then about 18 of rock, crushed rock. We take care of all parking lots, landscape maintenance downtown at different areas. So and then, of course, then most of our facilities, we have like Hannibal Park, which we have like seven ball fields. We have five lit ones, which we do. We have bathroom facilities, sesh stand we take care of. We have playground facilities. We host an average of eight to 10 tournaments a year out of Hannibal Park for Beatrice girls softball. We have co-ed tournaments out there. We have men's slow pitch tournaments out there. So we're busy from basically starting next weekend all the way until the end of October when we shut down. So we have a YRI, two nights a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then we have men's on Mondays. So basically every night of the week out there, we have something going on, so. And then we have the athletic facility, which we built that about four years ago when Housas closed down, so. And that was donated, a lot was donated by the Beatrice Girls Softball Association and Boys Baseball and Bullets Baseball. YRI donated some of the facility to, and the facility is open to the public. There are reservations required, so. So then, of course, at Shetaco Park, we have the Tabernacle, we have a couple of other pavilions, we have the campground, which we have 20 stalls in our campground. So we have water sewer, like 30 and 50 amp service at each facility for that, and we're open year-round down there, so.
Mark, how many campers do you have on average year-round?
Just depends on what's going on in town with.
Yeah, when there's a construction project, you get them to stay.
Yeah, like right now, I've got oh, nine or 10 down there right now. I had a couple left the other day, but then I had one pulled in over the weekend, so. But we'll get busier here once we start, and we try to keep about four or five open for short-term. People that come in, and then we do keep Riverside Park open short-term. So we have a seven-day stay there so people can get in and out, so we're just, otherwise we could fill up every stall if we wanted to. But we try to keep it open so that people can come in, enjoy town, and spend time here.
Yeah, I, we talked a little bit about expanding some of the camper camping area in town in different locations from time to time, and I, and that's the only complaint I've ever got about the campground is somebody that couldn't get in. Right. Yeah, so.
And that's, you know, we went to the monthly thing, it's probably been about six, seven years ago, but we used to have just a 30-day stay, but we've opened it up because we found out that we didn't, we couldn't fill up because we weren't filled, basically from Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, it was just Friday, Saturday, and we didn't, but now we, the revenue is decent, so we've just done that.
Yeah.
So, and we did open up Riverside about three years ago. We kind of just made it a seven-day stay, and we just kind of keep rotating people in and out, so that does, that opens it up for people who do come into town.
Yeah, that was, David Catlin was instrumental in that. He knew a lot more about it than I did, I remember, so.
Yeah. So now still at Shetaco, we have the Tabernacle, and then we have, I don't know, the pickleball courts, of course, and everybody knows that, they're all new, so we've, that's a big hit right now, so. We did do that here this last year, so. You know, and then you go to Riverside. Riverside's got three pavilions, bathroom, tennis court, basketball court. We've got eight campsites over there with basically 30 and 50 water sewer at each pad. And that's a seven-day stay over there. Once in a while, we'll get some people to stay a little longer in the fall. But we do close that one for the season October 31st, so. Of course, then we have the Big Blue Pet Park, which is another park, it's about 10 acre park for, it's basically a dog run, so we have a small section, then a bigger section for the dogs and stuff, and they have some amenities down there. They have a water fountain and some benches, and leadership class participated in that program a couple of years ago, and so it helped out with that, so.
Yeah.
So of course, we have Charles Park, Carnegie Building, we do take care of that. We take care of the outside, all the maintenance in and outside of that building too. And then you go to Veterans Memorial Park, which we do work with Rotary on that one. We take care of the outside. We hang the plaques for them now. We are getting another statue here in the next probably two to three months to add on to the rest, one of the stars area, so it's kind of a neat thing, so. You know, and then we have the Big Blue Water Park, which was built, basically opened up in 2000, so we're on year 23 right now, so. We do got kind of there's some issues coming that we need to look eventually at building a new water park in the next seven, 10 years, because lifespan of a water park is about 30 years, so. That's something to, that we'll be looking in our capital budget, and I'll be putting it in just to see, go on forward with it, see what happens.
But you think that that would be in the same location?
Yeah, I think you could build the same location, just right up on the same hill, yeah. Use the parking lot infrastructure you already have and that, and just go up the hill over there, and then just tear the other one down after you're done, so. Or, you know, some cities have torn down, and then you close for a year, and then basically rebuild it one year. Seen that happen before. So then we have Astro Park, which, you know, a few years ago was just, had playgrounds and a small shelter. And now we've got Splash Pad up there with, thanks to Shetoma and the donations from the community. So we do have, we've been, in our capital budget, we do, are going to propose a new playground up there to, for ADA to get rid of some of the sand and stuff that we have in the structures, so. Roseau X-Mark Park, of course, is over in Glenover, with that, you know, that came with X-Mark doing a good share of that. We own, it was just a small park there with small playground equipment, but it's probably been eight or 10 years ago that they came in and tore the house down, re-added it, but it's just got a bunch of amenities for that area of the town, so. You know, we have Skateboard Park, which was rebuilt after the flood. It's been about four years ago. It was all wood. Now we have all steel structure, so. It's kind of been a neat thing for the kids. And then you have Frobbery Park over in Front Berry Street over by Tim's house, so. Tim's helped out with that one with the AppCo, done some stuff there, and.
I was just thinking, I should be in the AppCo Frobbery Park myself. I don't work in the AppCo no more.
I know, but yeah. You helped get that started. They did a lot of cleanup there and volunteer work. So then you have Nichols Park, which is another facility that was done by the garden club, took care of that. They did a big grant a few years ago for that and restored that a little bit, so kind of cleaned it up a little bit. So then you have Robinson Park, which is a neighborhood park at Ninth and High. There's just basically a playground swing set there, so, pretty simple park. And then you go, then we have the other facility at Prairie Park, out at Prairie Playground, out at the YMCA, which we own all the playground equipment, and we lease that from the Y. And we do take care of that, and so they have, it's a big structure out there that we replaced probably four, it's been seven, eight years ago, so. And then some kind of the recent projects that we've done over the last few years, you know, we've done the Splash Pad and the bathroom facility at Astro Park. Hannibal Park improvements, we've done Diamonds 1, 2, and 3 redone. We're in the process, and we've done the pickleball courts was another project, and then the Gage County Foundation Trail Depot was a project that took us, it's been about four or five years working on it. We did it in pieces, and we've got one more area to do retention pond and finish that area up, and that area will be complete, so. But that's kind of just a basic overview of our department, what we do.
So what you're saying, Mark, you really don't do a damn thing?
No, never, never.
Mayor, all of us travel, but I just want you to know, I really think you and your department do a hell of a good job. I really do. I'm very impressed with all the park system. And when we removed a lot of the homes that were up and down that river, 30, 40 years, 50 years ago or something, it put a lot of ground on the park system to take care of.
We do move a fair amount of ground.
Yes, you do, and you do a very good job of it. Your staff does a very good job of it. They're all congenial when I talk to them and stuff. And I use the trails a lot, and there's a lot of people that use those trails, so. I want to congratulate prior council and administration for putting that together too, because that's a big plus for our community, it really is.
It is.
It's just, you just need to pass on to those guys. Everybody's doing a good job.
I'll do.
And just to piggyback on that, Mark has failed to mention, behind the scenes, he really helps facilitate a lot of fundraising and grants. really helps facilitate a lot of fundraising and grants for the city, and in my short tenure here, I can't express how instrumental he is in a lot of those efforts, and it makes my job a lot easier while he's going out there and having these talks and saying, you know, every couple of months, hey, we got this grant to apply for, but it's because he's kind of secured a good position for us. So, thank you for that, Mark. It's really instrumental, and you didn't mention it here, so I wanted to make sure everybody knows.
And I should have said it before, too, but the new pantry project is coming along. We're gonna be putting up plaster boards coming in next week, so we're getting along with that now, and you've been, just, you and your people have been great help down there, too. We'll get that damn job done here in another few months, I hope, but thank you for that also. Appreciate it.
How many acres do you mow?
Roughly about 250 acres, so, on a weekly basis, so. We have the equipment now. You know, back 10 years ago, we didn't have the equipment. Now we got the equipment, so.
I'm gonna add, because somebody, you know, I've hosted, or been the tournament director for probably upwards of 18 to 20 baseball tournaments in town, both at the, at the West Side Ballfields and having to use Hannibal on occasion, because the tournaments are so big, that the visitors that come to our, our ball diamonds in this town are just amazed at how well-kept they are, how well they're mowed, they're weed-eated, they're clean, the bathrooms are clean. If there's a problem, I call Mark or his team. I got a hotline to whoever's working. They're there. They pick up the trash about every hour and a half at both places. Just an incredible undertaking they do to support even on the weekends, so thank you to you and your team of, you know, you're, I know you always get new part-time people, but even Max, I guess, gets a pat on the back this time.
And I would say thank you, too. I mean, you know, when you think about it, it also is a piece of economic development for the city of Beatrice, because when you look at the amenities and the trails, I would venture to guess there's probably not a Class One city, let alone one of 12,500, that have the amenities of what we have. And so, doing that with four people and part-timers is absolutely amazing, and, you know, you bring a lot of people to this town, and when they come here, they spend money. And so, thank you for being an economic driver and for economic development and everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. All right. The next item on the agenda is actually Executive Session for Contract Negotiations. Mr. McLean?
I move that Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 8:12 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss contract negotiations.
Second.
Yep, your vote, please. And we will move into Executive Session now.